It is 7:01. Some of our people had some internet outages in my neighborhood, especially for some reason I am still up. I know Tom was out, but he was able to make it. Valerie was having problems and so was Alex at this point. So, we'll take a roll here. We've got myself, Nord, Mark, Tom, Luther, Jerry and Janet for seven full members. Richard and Jeff, I do not see. If I don't hear them, okay. And the one alternate I see on is Steve Tash. Steve, we will sit you for Richard. Okay. Okay. And before I say anything else, it should be called order of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for December 9th. Regular meeting at, as I said, 7:01. And we've seated the alternates, same title, different order. Moving on to the approval of minutes from November 12th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Nord. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jerry. Okay, discussion, changes, corrections?
Oh, this is, this is Janet. I'd just like to point out that while I wasn't at the meeting, I did listen to the video of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Jeff, I just want to say I think we lost Tom Hastings, but we did pick up Doug Jenny.
Okay. This is going to be musical chairs. Okay, in that case, with Tom having lost conductivity, we will seat Doug for Tom Hastings.
And it looks like we just picked up Alex.
Oh, okay. And Alex has the alternate. Thanks for the roll call, appreciate it. So again, it's Steve for Richard and Doug for Tom until and unless Tom makes it back in. And with Valerie not being on, she'll just use the recording to put together the minutes as she stated to me, she called me. Okay. So we were into discussion of the minutes from November 12th. Any changes, corrections, edits? Hearing none, and the motion on the floor has been seconded. All those in a favor of approving the minutes from November 12th, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Abstentions?
I should abstain because I didn't attend that meeting.
Thank you, Stephen. So moved, okay. Very good. Public comments. We will open up to public comments, again, limited to topics or items, not otherwise listed on the agenda. And when we talk about that, we're talking about items such as the public hearing. All comments regarding public hearing issues should be made during the public hearing. And there, if there's anything else that you see on here besides that item, or if there's anything else you wish to discuss, we're happy to hear from the public at this point. Hearing nothing from public comments, I'll make one statement here, since he's not on. Jeff Schellinger has tendered his resignation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. He and his family, he is retiring from Eversource and his main home will be in Florida, but he will keep a home here in Ashford. However, a majority of his time will be spent in Florida. So his resignation becomes effective January 1st. At our January 1st meeting, we will discuss our slate of alternates to step up and we'll make a motion to hopefully select from that group. But again, his resignation does not come effective until January 1st. So after the first, with our first meeting in 2025, we will ideally appoint an alternate from the list of alternates. And just to answer the other question, when it comes to replacing the alternate, we would give, we can provide recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, and then the Board of Selectmen would select an alternate, filling the position until the next municipal election, which would be next November. Okay, moving on to bills. We received a bill from the Chronicle, 39614 for advertising for hearings, I'm sure. We also received a Recording Secretary bill from Valerie. And I should actually have added this to the public comments too. Also tendering her resignation to the Planning and Zoning Commission is Valerie as the Recording Secretary. Her commission where her resignation was due to be in effect for January 1st. However, she graciously gave me some, and the board, some leeway. She will continue to cover January and February's meeting as long as I am in good faith, trying to find a replacement over those times. If we find one sooner, then that person will take over sooner than that. But she again has graciously given us January and February, where she would continue to take the minutes for us. So if you know of anyone of interest, please bring them to Mike's attention or my attention. Thank you.
This March Noble, Tom Hastings is back on.
Oh, okay. So Tom is back. So, in that case, we can remove, well, Tom is back on and in the meeting. Doug would remain seated, except now he is being seated for Jeff Schellinger.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Very good. All right. Moving on to correspondence. Most of the correspondence received had to do with the public hearing, so we'll talk about some of that information in there. Does that sound right, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And again, that brings us to the public hearing section. This is a continuation of last month's public hearing regarding PZ-24-3, Special Permit Application per Section 300-17C for a Farm Brewery and Eatery Private Event Space and Overnight Guest Accommodations at 317 Bevington Road, otherwise known as Crook's Orchard. Current owner applicant is Ben, are Ben and Olivia Lacy. And again, this is continued from our November 12th meeting. So the way our hearing will run again is any opening remarks or new information that the Laces would care to provide to us. Again, I think Mike has posted a number of items. We'll make sure we try and cover everything so the commission has the full grunt of information. But again, we'll open it up to the Laces to offer up a opening statement on this. Then we'll open up to the commissioners for further questions. After the commissioners have the opportunity, we'll open it up for public comment. And after the public comment, we will then give the Laces a last opportunity to share any information they have, and then we will close the hearing, ideally. Okay, very good. Laces, if you wish to have opening comments for us?
We can, we can hear you, Ben.
Oh, you can? Yeah. I mean, we submitted that letter. I think that pretty much sums it up.
Hey, there were a number of submissions and with the power outages, I wasn't able to print, but I do have the downloads here.
The one from Olivia and myself.
Yep. And updated letter to commissioners. Okay. Do the, does the commission wish to have the letter read or just brought up and to be discussed? I can read it into the record or if you had the opportunity to review it?
I did read it earlier, just speaking for myself.
Okay.
March Noble, I read it earlier as well.
All right.
Yeah, I read it as well. I think it would be good to have the applicant give us the highlights or for you to read it into the record, so it'll be in the minutes.
Sure, sure. All right. Well, if you don't mind, Laces, I'll read this into the record, and if the commission has questions directly from the letter itself, we'll go to there, and then we can talk about some of the other submissions that have been provided by Mike. Is that okay with you?
Yep, that works.
Okay, I am going to try to share my screen. Mike, can I share, please?
Yep. Give me one second. Okay, give it a shot.
Thank you, sir. Okay, dear commissioners, oop, need my glasses. Dear commissioners, we have just passed our one-year mark as stewards of the beloved Crook Orchards. While this first year has taught us many things, nothing has been more clear than the simple fact that we need to define other forms of revenue in order to sustain the orchard. Our proposed plans follow closely with Astrid zoning regulations. As listed in Article 4B, Section 1, the purpose of the residential agricultural zone is to promote the economic viability and operational sustainability of agricultural businesses in the town. By putting our ideas into practice, this would allow us to access a market of agritourism currently untapped by Crook Orchards, thus making the orchard economically viable. The USDA defines agritourism as a form of commercial enterprise that links agricultural production and or processing with tourism to attract visitors onto a farm, ranch, or other agricultural business for the purposes of entertaining or educating the visitors while generating income for the farm, ranch or business owner. Article 4B, Section 3 lists eateries and farm wineries, distilleries and breweries as special permit uses. We are also soliciting for seasonal worker, excuse me, we are also soliciting for seasonal workers' housing as we will be in need of housing once our new orchard of 1,100 trees start producing. When not in use during the season, we would like the opportunity to host guests as part of our orchard educational experience. If permitted to host guests in these gypsy wagons, it would help us provide awareness of the daily processes, work and dedication it takes to maintain an orchard. When people are able to glimpse the inner workings, they develop a better appreciation for farming and are more likely to support small farms and businesses, in turn bringing more business to all of our farms. Orchard events, public and private, would fall under Article B, Section 10, as temporary agricultural related uses, which states temporary or seasonal events of limited duration on a farm which are accessory to agricultural uses, such as educational demonstrations, hayrides, petting zoos or other similar uses, may be allowed. Without the opportunity to host these types of events, Crooks will most definitely suffer a decline in business. The updated map shows that we have ample parking available for both private and public events. Access to shuttle services would be made available for private events and encouraged to limit unnecessary traffic. Our private events business model would include the purchase of consumable and seasonal goods from the orchard in addition to partnering with farmers, small businesses whose product is already offered at the store. This enables us to expand our retail business while also highlighting Astrid's resident farms and their products. Implementing these low-impact ideas diversifies the orchard, allowing for the necessary support needed to withstand crop failure and other unforeseen circumstances. It goes without saying, the orchard is our number one priority, and the special permits will enable Crook Orchards to succeed. Thank you, Ben and Olivia Lacy. Anything to add to that, folks? I'm just trying to give you every opportunity if I miss anything or misrepresented anything.
Nope, it's perfect.
No, thank you for reading that.
Surely, sure. So, Ag Commission, excuse me, Planning and Zoning Commission, do you have questions or comments or clarifications needed from the Laces?
Just about the gypsy wagons of what kind of facilities they have for sanitation.
That would be if we could build that bath house and the bathroom in the back.
Okay.
I understand it, and I did not get a chance to print that up. Did I? What I'd like to do to help the commission also is I'm going to share the responses to questions raised during the public hearing from last time for the commissioners to remind them of what went on, so, and what the Laces responded to. So if I could share again there. Make it look like I know what I'm doing, which I don't. There it is. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, whoops, it went away. Here we go. So the seasonal staff quarters, the rental accommodations. There was the question of the maximum number of units that they would be seeking at this point. It was three units maximum. Those units, okay, we'll just go on. The question of onsite management of overnight residents, whether it's the staff or the rentals there. They are on the farm daily, including weekends, so seven days a week, and only live 10 minutes away if there is an issue after hours. This actually falls well within the requirements of the short-term rental regulations, if you will. More detailed plans for the bathroom bathhouse facility. The bathroom structure will be up to 19 by 10 feet with a nine-foot eve height. No building review is required for structures less than 200 square feet with an eve height below 10 feet. And on the maps that were provided, we're now able to see the proposed bathroom, there, I did it again. Bathroom facility location, I gotta move us out of the way here. There. Get the pictures out of the way. There we go. So again, the bathroom facility and its location, along with the well and septic, have been added to one of the maps showing its position in relation to the proposed three gypsy wagons or accommodations, if you will. The bathroom suffil, suffil, facility is thus 900, 190 square feet. Health department requirements. These, again, with the septic area, all being requiring approval from the Eastern Highlands Health District. Contractual limitation of residency of staff and renters of an onsite accommodation. Each unit will have a maximum occupancy of two adults per agreement to be drafted prior to use after approval is granted. So should they gain the special permit, they will have contractual or Lacy leasing contracts for those people. The cidery tasting room, another question that came up. Certified architect will be required due to the complicated nature of code requirements for a cider facility. A detailed plan would be provided prior to construction after approval of the special permit has been granted. The structure would not exceed a 40 by 40 footprint. So that would be 1,600 square feet. Again, location, construction plans of the cidery tasting room, the updated map showing the proposed structure would be, where it would be located, where the original house was demolished. And also the occupancy, the size of the tasting room in that 1,600 square feet. Occupancy would be determined by the architect and fire marshal. The proposal would be 100, approximately 150 mixed seating and standing again. Building and fire code would ultimately determine the full occupancy. A couple more here, cidery and tasting room hours, no later than 7:00 PM. I don't know if there's a, Laces, do you have a, an opening time that you're thinking about?
I don't believe we've nailed that down at this point, but
That's okay, that's okay. It's all in early stages, we understand.
Okay.
More detailed description of the private number of events, maximum occupancy, parking, traffic, getting in, getting out. Public events beyond the normal agricultural support of the current permitted use, festivals, farm tours, added vendor catering entertainment. So approximately 12 events per year. Maximum capacity is 200 guests. The updated map for parking requirements. Traffic has the, again, the ingress and egress of the lot, and there are current entrances that allow wide enough accommodation for a vehicle entering and exiting at the same time, and also a second entrance directly adjacent to the stone building on, on the road, which can accommodate a vehicle entering and exiting simultaneously. Providing letter of endorsement from the Astrid Agricultural Commission, and we have a number of endorsing, endorsement letters to share. And they, as I understand it from the email and information I got, they did attend the 1120 meeting of the Agricultural Commission and received such an endorsement, which we can share, it's part of the material that Mike provided. And the last item here, more detailed description of food service to tasting room, provided to the tasting room. No service of food would be provided. Food would be sold through the store and allowed to be consumed on site in the tasting room. So simply packaged foods is what you're talking about. You're not talking about a kitchen provision.
Correct, yeah, it would be more kind of like you could just buy stuff and take like a picnic basket out there and
Yep, yep. And then people can bring their own, is what you're saying too.
No.
Oh, no.
It would be purchasing from in the, in the store.
It'd be counterproductive. But you know, you could buy it, like our thought would kind of be, you go in, you shop around, you buy some of the Yep. stuff that people make in town. You know, because we want to sell the cider in the store. We don't want to have like a taproom bar set up, so everything's going to be bottled. And then you would buy it in the store and then you could take it out there. But we need the new facility in order to brew it, because you, there's no way you could meet code when you change the use of the current building. So you have to build a new building.
Understood, understood. So, shedding a little light.
I have a question on the the tent and portable restrooms, and I apologize if you've already answered this, but is the tent a permanent one or would that be based on events? And the portable restrooms are those like the, I don't know what they call them now, the porta-potties that are self-contained?
Yeah. I mean, depending on the event, but you know, they bring them in and sometimes you can get the nice ones. They're more like a, they're on like a trailer, you know, they have running water and all that type of stuff. And the tent would be, you know, you set it up and take it down for the, I don't know, I would imagine 48 hours.
Okay. I think we lost Jeff.
Yeah, his picture faded out on mine.
Yeah, he said that if he dropped off during the meeting that he would, he's got a hotspot that he would try to connect to, so hopefully we see him back in a minute or two.
Well, this is Steve Tash, I can just tell you where I am. We just lost power a minute or so ago, and I'm actually trying to join from my phone so I can save my laptop, so maybe he's experienced the same thing.
Oh, okay. Well, is it okay to carry on with any questions, Mike?
Yeah, we still have a quorum, so if, if and when Jeff gets back on, we can just bring him up to speed.
Okay, well, since I'm the vice chair, I'll continue. Do any of the other commissioners have questions of the Laces? Jerry?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, hearing none, we can entertain questions from the public. And please keep them brief and to the point, so we can hear from everyone. Does anyone have anything, any questions or anything to say?
Looks like Jeff just came back in.
Oh, good.
And Steve.
Okay, yes, okay. You're in the dark. We, we, we just finished up with the commissioner questions. There were no more, Jeff.
Okay, yeah, I'm in the, I'm in the semi-dark because I have a chargeable eight-hour light bulb. Hopefully it doesn't need to be used that long. And there's a question from Mr. Zlatnik. Once we come to, one more, one more minute, Mr. Zlatnik, I just want to close things out. So just to, not to have to recap everything for me, obviously, but I just wanted to state that there are letters from the Ag Commission as well as the Economic Development Commission as well as the Connecticut Farm Bureau, all supporting the application of the Laces, as well as a petition that was submitted to Astrid Planning and Zoning from basically local neighbors in and around with signatures of approximately 40 people in support of the Laces efforts. So I just wanted to share that. And if I'm being redundant, if you already talked about that, I'm sorry. So no more from the commissioners, you said, right, Janet?
Correct.
Okay, very good. So we open up to the public section and for comment, Mr. John Zlatnik.
Hi, that's, this is Mary Ellen Zlatnik.
Oh, okay, very good.
Okay. Are we in response to the questions? Is that, you're looking for added questions to what you listed?
I'm, we're looking for your comments regarding the application for this proposal.
Okay, I just wanted to quickly go back to the answered questions that they had. They were typed, you just had them up on screen.
Would you like me to bring it back up?
Sure, that'd be great. If you can, don't get lost.
Well, only if the lights go out. And here. Updated responses. Okay. We are on board. Let me get rid of that and I'll move up.
Perfect. Okay, great. I just wanted to touch base on, on some of these that I felt were incomplete. And I didn't know if you thought that these were incomplete answers to what And I didn't know if you thought that they was were incomplete answers to what. The actual question was. So, uh, the rental accommodations, is that for seasonal workers or for renting like an Airbnb? A number one.
I believe the intent of those units, um, their, their, well, their primary intent was to house seasonal workers. Um, from the uh. Uh, helping out on the farm for periods of time. And when those seasonal workers aren't there, they were to be offered up as um. Opportunities for um.
Camping?
I I guess, I guess you'd call it camping. I think it'd be, it's a little different than that um. With uh what, you know, uh, I don't know fires or anything involved there, but um. Uh, maybe I should let the Lacy's describe it a little bit more.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. Uh, it just seems like it would be nice to multipurpose them and generate some income from it.
Okay, um.
This is Luther. Real quick, Jeff.
Yes.
I I just want to make sure we don't get too far into the weeds of. And I'm happy to be quiet if I'm wrong on this, but it's my understanding that typically at these public hearings, we don't really engage in a. Question and answer process with the public, but it's an opportunity for comment to be put on the record.
Yes, it is an opportunity to put in for comment. We would have further discussion. I just needed clarification when it came to what the requirements were. Thank you, Luther. Um, you're, you are right about it not being a uh a back and forth at this point. Correct.
Okay, then I can just list my concerns for each, each one. That way we don't get into the back and forth banter. The number one was the maximum number of views. You did address that for three. Um, and then I was, the question was again, um, is this for a camping situation where you rent them to campers to stay there overnight? Um, and you said possibly yes, I believe that it's a a camping situation. Is that correct? Is that? Or did I misquote you there?
No, no, no. Uh, we we did, we did give the indication that they were going to be uh. They're, they're providing them for educational purposes and for people to experience the uh, um, the farm, so uh. I don't, I don't know what, and they would be drawing up some type of a contract. So yes, it would be a rental, but uh. That's fine.
Okay, okay. Um, and I didn't know if that also. Uh, the question of sanitize, I think it was the second one. Whether that structure did include sanitation uh conditions. And or septic conditions. Like there would be for an R V. I didn't know if a gypsy wagon did have that. I was unsure. So that was one of the questions for number one. I know I just said three maximum units.
Yep.
Number two, um, number two, the response. Um, I was really concerned about that because it just states onsite management of overnight residence, which I'm rereading, I know that. But we are at the farm daily and that's nice that they they are during the day. But who is the uh mechanism of enforcement for these renters to stay there? So you can ensure people not having extra com- companions in or extra people coming in the door if you're not on the premises. Who is the gatekeeper? So that's a big question for number two. Um, a little concerned about that because you know, you can start a nice fire pit and have a good time, but then walk away from it and you're not really responsible to put that out. And no one would be there. There's nothing mandatory that states the Lacy's have to stay there overnight. They could give them the key and leave.
Right, right.
Correct. And that is a big concern.
Okay.
Okay, so number uh, number three, um, it was regarding the bathroom bathhouse. Is that a structure like with a foundation and mechanicals? Or because they claim here that it does not have to be uh reviewed as a building, however, if it is a full-on. Bathroom structure with mechanicals and has to appease those uh. Guidelines to service the public. How is that not building reviewed?
Can I answer that?
Absolutely.
We, um, if if you wish to at the end, uh, Ben, uh, when you have the opportunity.
All right, well, just remind me on that one. I don't know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so and that three, uh, we see a markup of the portable restrooms. And do correct me and stop me if they've supplied more information that I just did not see if it came in this afternoon. I probably did not see it, but I see on the markup on the portable restroom area, which is placed. Outside the excluded area and in the non-budible area that according to the deed is not supposed to be built upon or used as. For any business and any added structures. Is that um? Is that still viable, that deed? So that's, that's a question for number three.
Okay.
Um, number four is I did, I did not have anything for number four because it said see updated map. Um, for the same, that was the same question, really. It was in response to the same bathroom issue. Um. Again, bathroom issue, number five, I did not have anything for that. And then. So my other concern was how does the number six, when it says see updated map showing proposed septic area. Um, requiring health approval from Health District, um, does that in fact go on the sold deeded? Property requiring agriculture, the State Department of Agriculture to be in on that, to weigh in on that. That was the sixth. And then I can't scroll down because I'm looking at your map.
I'm sorry. There we go.
No, that's okay. Um. And then. Um, yeah, and that was it. Um, going down. Yep, finishing up with uh number ten. I didn't have any, anything for that. And then I see that um, the Cideri and Tasty Room hours of operation. Um, again, you already, you just asked actually the Lacy couple when they started and they were working on that. Um, but my question on the hours of operation. If that is an hours of operation for a Cideri and you go lock it up at seven o'clock and you lock the gates. How do you ensure that your glampers, who's watching over that situation if you've left the property? That, that's a big one for, for that. Um. And on number twelve. Is I was, I was trying to figure out the twelve events per year, are they completely compressed into all the summer months? So basically every May, all four weekends, June, all four weekends, July, all four weekends. August, all four weekends. Are they all what they're assuming they're, they're going to use for a two hundred occupancy for. For any type of big event? I didn't know if they could address that. Um. And I didn't know, I'm talking about the Agricultural Com- uh, Commission on thirteen. Um, did the Agricultural Commission Commissioner or the actual Department of Agriculture. Respond to them about that deed and their interest in doing what they're doing. Um, and that is it for the fourteen that I had. Um. And I, I didn't want to occupy all your time, um, because I know there's probably other people with many other comments. But I just, I did want to also thank you for having us and letting us express our opinions and, and really. Our, our attempt is not to discourage anybody uh for developing their agricultural model. But we wanted to ensure that there is for you a comprehensive plan that has been developed. And, and, and honestly, I didn't feel that way walking away from the last meeting. I felt there was a lot of effort put into trying to basically put, put together Lego pieces and trying to figure out what they're. Actually looking for, what they are looking for to happen in a comprehensive plan. And um, I'm hopeful that they're going to be able to provide that. Um, which is, is you know, articulating much more clearly. Um, dimension setbacks, setbacks for the Cideri, is, is that in? You know, is that in conforming with um, the codes that we have um, right now currently in Ashford? We thought that that basically, that the proposal was incomplete. Um, the actual nature of business and scope was not clear. Um, the only statement of the list of five that we thought related to their current agricultural business was number two, which states hard cider brewing. In the town meeting, they stated that they're seeking to engage in the cider brewing, which is manufacturing. But at the same time, they would like have a tasting room, which makes sense for such product, and then they would like to sell that product in their farm store. They indicated on the markup, the forty by forty, then read that the area would be the Cideri where they wanted to brew it and also have the tasting. The markup though, if you look at it, does not include the setback footages deemed necessary in the codes for this Cideri. Uh, also when the serving or tasting occurs, are those setbacks and footage is the same? I noticed in other town regs that they're actually a little different. Tallins is a hundred foot setback for the manufacturing. Out of sight, out of align with uh people visually seeing that. And also two hundred feet for the dispensing or, you know, handing out at a tasting, for instance. Um, so they have a little bit different um code uh worked in there. Um. So I just wanted to pull that up because I think that is of importance is the, the setbacks, if you were to go ahead with. Uh, you know, promoting the Cideri, um, which will enhance their business. Um. It really needs to be addressed and um, the abiding neighbors should know uh how substantive and detailed the plan is for that. The, I, the last letter, you know, abroad since I approached so many issues. And before I close, I know that there was a lot, a lot on all these five. Um, on the original five, the big ask, so to speak, is um. Each one is so broad and so sweeping that they need uh ultimately. A big review on each one in detail and of plan and execution. And I don't think we have that. And I don't felt, I didn't feel that one permit on one decision should. Cover all of those items on that, those line items, one, two, three, four and five. Those are really big and, and need to be reviewed. And so. My biggest ask for tonight is um, could we um table the majority of them and pick out their. Their primary one that they're seeking to get up and ready and tackle that first before. We have a chance to thoroughly review, uh, because we don't have any plans that we see that are posted. We don't have any details. And in the current letter that the Lacy's did give, there still are not any specifics, no. No details. It, it just doesn't satisfy the, the application process, I don't believe. Um. I could go on. I don't want to hog up your time because there seems like there's a lot of people that may want to, to jump in and do their thing. But I, I do ask that we just perhaps if we could put a pause on the majority of them. And then take maybe the first one that they would think would be most critical. And gaining a lucrative type situation going where they're making some money next season and they can start in.
Okay, any, anything else, Zlatnik?
Um. Oh, hold on. Oh, so, yeah, my husband was asking, um. There was currently, if I look at your materials that are posted, um, thank you for doing that, for posting everything so we can look at that over. Um, what would be the mechanisms for noise control? Um, the decibel monitor, um, traffic control, a traffic study would be in, in good order if you're planning this. Which it seems like the ask is still there for um, two hundred plus cars. And the biggest on that one is in a trickle effect, obviously, as you know, in business, because we ran businesses for thirty years, is that. The trickle effect means it comes in and it goes out all day long and it flows. When you have two hundred people leaving a church and they've got to be there at, let's say, four o'clock in the afternoon for this reception. They're all coming at once on these little roads of Ashford, which we barely fit on anyway. And they've got to enter this facility and then leave at whatever time is. It does warrant a traffic study for that perp- those purposes, for any events that are engaging in that amount of people. Um, the, the last one, I think, which is important for the commission would be. Any of the watershed issues, um, oil, uh, water separators, erosion control for parking lot for that. Also, again, we're, we're going to the, the highest scenario that they're looking for is that two hundred. And that's a lot of cars. That's a lot of people. Um. And.
Most applications of this degree do warrant those types of requests.
Did you hear that?
Uh, actually, no, I did not.
Okay, Paul just mentioned, um, he's a little bit distant from the audio, but go ahead, Paul.
Well, most, um, Paul Zlatnik, most applications of this volume or degree of cars coming into, you know, an event like that. My experience in the past was they're looking for traffic studies. Um, or uh, controls of lighting, controls of noise. And also parking lot, um. You know, whether a parking lot needs to be striped, um. Directional signs for egressing and um. Also oil, oil water separators for any sort of erosion uh control. So I think with something of this size and volume, all those things should be taken into consideration.
Okay, anything else, Zlatniks?
Um, I was just looking, um. Why, I, I was gonna make, um. You know, you could go to the regs, you could keep going to the regs back and forth, and I know you're well aware of them, but you know. Music is probably one of our big issues. The uh noise ordinance, the regulations in section twenty-nine three of the town regs does speak about excessive noise. As well as section three hundred dash three talks about noise levels. Um, and I think, um. That's important. That's a, that's a big one, I think. Um, I think they could procure a lot of support. From us and others who are kind of set back with the immensity of this um, ask. If there was some definite um guidelines as far as how they're going to deal with really loud music there. If they are renting this place, they're leaving, leaving it to the caterer and expecting someone to manage that wedding. Or manage those, you know, you could have anything from bachelor parties to any kind of party. And when you're leaving that to people, you're, you're asking them to fend on their own. And, you know. I, I can't understand how someone could just basically say they're, they're going to be there during the day, as they said in the answers there. But at night, they have no commitment in that statement that states that there will be a management, some type of management system. That they would be managing all of this that does need to be turned off and managed.
Most campgrounds have an office and the people have.
Excuse me, you know, if, if this is considered a campground situation, whatever degree. You know, most campgrounds have an office that people need to check in. They have a gate. Um, most, any campground I've been to, to monitor who comes and goes, whether they're leaving at whatever hour or coming at whatever hour. There is different times that are regulated as to when people can come and go from a campground. And also to control anything that gets out of hand, which happens quite often. Um, so I think, you know, the way people. Communicate via the phone, whatever, they say, hey, we're having a party over here at this campground. Come on by, there's nobody here to monitor it. Next thing you know, you got fifty plus people that show up, but nobody's there to regulate it.
Just taking some notes down. Okay, anything else, folks? Your ti- your time, I didn't put a timeline on it.
That's great, and we, thank you so much for listening to us. Um, yeah, we, we do hope this works out well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, folks, for your input. Uh, going to, um, uh, Ma Varga thirty-three, if you'd state your name fully for the record.
Hi, everyone. This is Michael Varga. Lack of a good username. Um, I just want to say a couple of things. I wanted to say first and foremost that. I just want to say a couple of things. I wanted to say first and foremost that I think the Lacy's are doing something very admirable. Trying to revitalize a staple, if you will, maybe sometimes a wavering staple, but a staple of the same of agriculture in this town for the better half of sixty years, especially at a time when smaller agriculture is dying across the country, but especially in New England. I think personally, and I think a lot of small agricultural business owners would agree with me when they say that I resonate with having to diversify as much as possible in order to break even, let alone try to make a profit in ag, especially in agricultural tourism. You know, my grandfather lived in Mansfield and had five kids and lived off of thirty dairy cows on a single income for twenty-five years up until the late seventies. I wouldn't make eleven minutes. I'd be broke in eleven minutes in twenty twenty-four if I tried to raise five kids in lower middle-class household uh, on thirty dairy cows in twenty twenty-four. So times have changed dramatically. And I think that we need to encourage small agricultural business owners to do what they need to do to be in order to not only survive, but try to make a profit. I have a good friend in Litchfield County, a little bit different than Wyndham County. He's got three hundred dairy cows over there, and we've had multiple discussions. He can't even break even on three hundred dairy cows. He's had to do ice cream, a cafe and a restaurant for them to break even and every once in a blue moon, they get over the red. So I, I think that just articulates the need for diversification. I, I also can say firsthand that I think that the Lacy's and Crooks has helped uh, small business owners in town, people that are trying to bring products and sell products at their store, my wife included. Um, and I think what they're trying to do in town is going to allow for further integration and expansion and growth for small agriculture in our town and surrounding towns. And, and then just lastly, I, I think I beat a dead horse every time I come on one of these meetings and say that, but I just, I think there's a good warning, you know, in the, in the fifties, I don't know how many, how many farms were in town, but there's a lot more than the twenty-five or so that are left in the town of Ashford. And I think that, you know, if we continue to stifle growth and stifle these, these farms from trying to uh, make a profit, then, then we're all gonna find that our small, beautiful, small ag town is going to be filled with developments, overgrown conservation land, where nobody's going to be able to afford to live here because they'll all be the summer homes of residents of New York and Boston. You know, I can find two dozen properties with the same footprint in five different towns and the same footprint, the same population, the same amenities. And I can go and buy, you know, build two houses, an orchard, a Christmas tree farm, a hundred cows, four barns. And nobody's going to discourage me. In fact, they're probably going to encourage me because they know what that brings to surrounding businesses and agriculture. I think that, you know, if we continue to think that we had, can have an intimate say in the business plans or the business models or the business actions of any small business in, in town, that I think it's disturbing. It's a little mind blowing. You know, we went to the, the Buels Farm Festival, Fall Festival this fall. And I think about what it did for not only Buels, but the, the other, the, the community as a whole, and then also the small businesses that, that were there as well. And I think those are the kind of things that we need to encourage. You know, we, we shoot down so often small businesses in town. We don't even want to go near mid to large-sized businesses. Running out of options in terms of things that we're going to be able to have in this town that's going to bring a sense of community or allow our agricultural land to stay, to stay rule, allow our, our town to stay rule. Thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Forrester. Next up, uh, uh, Mr. Lundquist.
Good evening. Jeff Lindquist, uh, here. No, no worries. It's not the first time. It won't be the last. Lindquist, Lundquist, Landquist, I've heard them all. So I, I'd like to begin with a, a brief procedural question. I, I did submit a written comment this morning. And I don't, um, I don't know if it was received. I, I think it was posted as public comment number seven, but I don't know how, uh, if that would become part of the record or if it needs to be read into the record.
Uh, having received it, it, uh, actually does, is part of the record. Am I right, Mike?
Yes. Okay, well, uh, i- if it's part of the record, then I, I don't, I won't belabor the point, but I do want to add a few, add a few explanatory phrases to it. I, I, I hope that the board or the commission has the opportunity to read the letter. I've, I've reviewed the zoning regulations extensively and I see two large problems with the Lacy's application. And I've been asked to come here by my client, Gail Chernowski, who's one of the abutting landowners, uh, to raise those issues. Uh, I've done my best to, to make it easy on the commission by citing to the particular regulations and I'm referring to and other applicable law throughout my letter. So again, I urge you to read it before voting on the special permit application. But the two principal problems with a special permit application is that two of the uses are simply not permitted in the residential agricultural zone. And that the application is incomplete to adequately assess the two uses that may be permitted in the residential agricultural zone. Uh, first, uh, the, the easy, the easy questions. The private event space that there, that the Lacy's request is, is just not permitted in the residential agricultural zone. Farms are permitted temporary agricultural related uses of, uh, of limited duration, accessory to the agricultural use. But those are limited in the residential zone to small educational demonstration, hayrides, petting zoos and the like, weddings, events of two hundred people or more. Those are limited to the commercial, uh, the general commercial zone. Uh, you'll, you'll find those items laid out in the general commercial zone regulations. You won't find them in the residential agricultural zone regulations. It's simply not permitted. And, uh, if the Lacy's are able to identify uh, smaller, uh, hayrides, petting zoos and the like that they wish to have, uh, they can certainly, certainly make those events available, but the large-scale events that they're seeking are just not permitted. So too with the overnight guest accommodations that they're seeking. The cabins are, uh, to the extent that they're viewed as camping, they're not allowed because campgrounds, new campgrounds are not permitted in the town of Ashford. To the extent that they're viewed as short-term rentals, they're not allowed because it's not an owner-occupied property. I have to respectfully disagree with the notion that being ten minutes away is sufficient to satisfy the zoning regulations. But the regulations are clear that, uh, short-term rentals are limited to a portion of the owner's primary residence. Where they don't live on site, they, they can't have a short-term rental. Also, the, the cabins don't qualify as dwellings as defined by the zoning regulations and where they don't qualify as dwellings, they couldn't be rented even if uh, the Lacy's lived on property. As to the, insufficiency of the regulation, of the application. Wineries and farm eateries are potentially permitted, but those uses have to meet the, the scope and, uh, stature of those laid out in the zoning regulations. The Lacy's need to, I believe, demonstrate that, uh, they're going to manufacture all of the alcohol on site that, uh, the, uh, alcohol that they're going to manufacture, it falls below the state threshold for qualifying for a farm winery and, uh, the like. So too with the farm eatery, uh, they to demonstrate that they're going to make food on premises. And I don't believe that the special permit application they presented meets those requirements. Most importantly, I believe I, I heard the phrase early days uttered by, by someone, I, I'm not sure who, but that's a problem for this application because the zoning regulations require that all special permit applications be submitted with site plans signed and sealed by licensed professional land surveyors and, uh, civil engineer, including uh, information such as the location, uh, of, uh, landscaping, the location of soil types and forested areas, a description of, uh, subsurface and surface drainage, hydrological analyses, architectural drawings of any proposed buildings, a list of all permits, local and state necessary, and a traffic report, among other things. And the fact that, uh, a site plan not prepared by a licensed surveyor, civil engineer, or an architect, uh, the failure to submit that type of site plan, I think, is fatal to the special permit application. And so, uh, while I don't believe they could ever, uh, demonstrate, uh, the type of entitlement to the type of events or dwellings that there's, uh, are, lodgings that they're, uh, seeking, they might be able to, uh, demonstrate a permissible cidery and, and farm eatery, but with, uh, an application, uh, that is complete and contains all of the required materials. Uh, otherwise, I'll rely on my, uh, written submission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindquist. Any other public comment out there? Doug, I know you had your hand up earlier. We'll, uh, touch base with you, um, in a second. Anyone else from the public? Whether it's electronically or waving or you wish to speak. Oh, okay. Could you identify yourself, please?
Hi, my name is Judy Campbell, twenty-one Lakeside Drive, Ashford.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell, go right ahead.
I guess I did submit a letter and I know it's within the materials that were listed. And our main concern, and I know my husband touched on this, um, at the last public hearing for the Lacy's. I'm, we're, we're very unsure and we need clarification on, um, the incomplete application that was submitted by the Lacy's. It's, uh, missing a component, which is the Wyndham Water Works. All other applicants that have applied for special permits have had this document, um, within their application, and we noticed that the Lacy's did not. So we're in question on moving forward. Um, is this something that the commission is going to not require for some people or require for others? And my other question and concern, um, would be, is the glamping, which is the overnight accommodations or otherwise, um, short-term rental when the cabins are not in use for their field hands? How is that going to be regulated if there, um, is going to be no one on site, even though they live ten minutes away? Um, how is that going to be regulated, number one, by the commission and number two, by the Lacy's? With, um, all of the other comments that have been made about glamping, camping, overnight accommodation, short-term rental, would, would they need a um, new short-term rental application to be put in? Um, and I know that, um, the previous, um, attorney had just spoke about that. So that, those were our concerns mostly, and I wanted to also understand the Crooks Orchard, is that, is that the legal name Crooks Orchard? Or is it, I do believe, Crooks Orchard Farm LLC? Is the, is the Lacy's property under an LLC? That would be our only concerns of the three things. Mostly the application that was submitted and approved by the commission to be accepted was not complete. We did not see on the materials list of, um, the Wyndham Water Works paperwork. So we, we, we're, we're just, we just need some clarification on that. But we thank you for your time tonight for letting me speak.
Okay, very good. Thank you for, uh, speaking up. We appreciate that. Any other public comment? Hearing none. Um, I would move to the, uh, Lacy's. Unless my commission has any specific questions to gain any more information from the, uh, any input that was given, uh, or something you've thought of since then? If not, then we, uh, close with, uh, uh, the, uh, Lacy's input, uh, on the application.
Did, did you keep a punch list?
What do we have here? Well, one of the issues had to do with the, uh, the bathhouse was one of the, uh, pieces that I think would be great for, uh, filling in regarding that.
Yeah, so the structure, just the structure itself doesn't require a permit. But when you get into equipping it, then there would be stuff to review, but the structure itself doesn't require one, so. It seems irrelevant to me just as far as getting it approved, the, the right to do it.
And, and I believe, you know, besides the fact that Eastern Highlands would be reviewing it for, um, health and septic and sanitation. Also, I believe there's a stipulation with the Eastern Highlands Network about reviewing, uh, a structure or a shed uh, for such, uh, such function itself for its integrity also.
Yeah, so I'd like to remind everybody that this is not, we're not asking for the right to build it. We're asking for the right to be able to build it, if that makes sense.
Okay, um, and there was a question about, I, I don't think I'd heard this before unless I missed it in the reading. Deeded property, deeded portions of the property?
Yeah, what's? What was the question about?
About putting structures on certain areas that's not allowed? Is that, are you familiar with anything like that?
Yeah, I mean, you, you know, the, the development rights are sold, so you have two percent of the, the property you can put a, a permanent structure on.
Two percent.
Yeah, and something like that bathhouse in the back, that, that would allow us to like field pack things, so. It's something we, we could do and it wouldn't be an issue at all and we're just, we're just asking for the right to multipurpose it.
Um, Mr. Chair, could I ask a question about that two percent?
Surely.
Does that two percent include any, anything to do with, um, commercial? Buildings? Does it limit kind of buildings you can put on there?
No, the, there's five acres where all the buildings are and that's free and clear. So there's nothing on the land where the, where the rights are sold.
Well, you're putting the, um, the new bathhouse there, aren't you? And you're putting up, well, the, um, this, uh, housing, the glamping of the housing facilities, um, though they're, though I guess they're not permanent, um. So I just want, I, I just want a clarification that what you're building is allowable according to your deed. I, I wasn't, um, I'm not really familiar with what your deed says.
It is, yep. We actually reversed a bunch of that land back. There was a bunch of stuff that we took down. We reclaimed that. There was a bunch of stuff that we took down. We reclaimed that, that horse arena, and put it back to a hay field.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Lacy's, that you'd like to share?
Unless there's any other questions we didn't touch on.
I feel like most of the questions that were brought up were already addressed through the last meeting, through all of the updated maps, through our letter, and all of the, the punch list of questions that we had submitted. The Wyndham Water Works, that's in the application that was submitted. And Ben, do you have anything else to?
No, I just, you know, I think people are getting a little confused about this. We, you still have, if we're gonna build something, we still have to go through all the process of review and stuff, so to have that now doesn't make sense. To spend all that money on an architect, and it just, we're just asking for the right to be able to do that.
All right, thank you very much. With that, looking for a motion to close the hearing at this point?
Jeff?
Yes.
Can I, I just wanna hit on a couple of things while the hearing is still open.
Surely, Mike, right ahead.
Okay, and this is just so that commission has a chance to can ask me questions or the applicant questions. I just wanna touch on it. So I, I do wanna clarify that we did get the, the comments back from Wyndham Water Works on the application. They sent them over this morning, so those are posted. They, they came in literally at nine o'clock this morning. The and, and I, I guess I kinda wanna just, you set the table with this discussion, because we've heard a lot of feedback on it, and I wanna clarify and make sure that we're all on the same page. So there, that, this application is not seeking approval for a campground or a short-term rental, or for a wedding facility, or you know, any one thing. And I'm not saying that because I'm trying to clarify what the Lacy's have asked for. I'm saying that because this is all the, the way this application is being brought before you is all being tucked under this umbrella of agriculture. So there's, there's several uses which are listed in the zoning regulations. But all of the things that they're talking about, in my mind, the way that this came before you, is that it's part and parcel of the primary use of the property being ag. So they're not, they're not getting approval to conduct weddings, for example, and they can abandon all of the other things happening on the property and then just conduct weddings, for example. They can't abandon use of the farm and just allow the intermittent use of these cabins as rentals. These all fall under and, and must occur as accessory uses to ag. And that, that was why, in my mind, the letter from the Farm Bureau was important, because they were weighing in on whether or not these are, these uses all fall under ag. Something that we dealt with in a similar community a couple of years ago, I did, was someone who had eighteen-wheelers that they were using to haul hay. Eighteen-wheelers in a residential zone are not something you typically see, but they need those vehicles to haul hay. So you, you know, you can't pigeonhole any one of these things and sort of sit it out on an island. We need to be comfortable that these all fall under the use of the property as ag. The, the section of the regulations that really I think speak to some of those outstanding questions, at least in my mind, which is, again, the mechanism that brought it before you is three hundred dash seventeen J three, which, which is the temporary agriculture-related uses. It does list things like hayrides, petting zoos, or similar. And then it says, or similar uses may be allowed, and it speaks to it coming to the zoning enforcement officer. But that if essentially I'm not comfortable, there's something that's of greater intensity, the process is that it's a special permit before the commission. So that is why the, the other components to this, on top of the historic use of the property and, and the cidery, was funneled to you through the special permit process. I wanna mention that you, as the commission, are the only entity that can make a determination on whether or not an application is complete. As staff, I cannot do that. The applicant can't do that, and members of the public cannot do that. You have the right to determine if an application is complete. So court case, farming Gerard from several years ago, it's not something that I can do ahead of time. And there are provisions in the regulations which you have used previously to determine if you do not need some component listed in the regulations to make your decision. That is something that we have cited before. Lastly, I, we can talk about this a little bit further if you get into deliberations, but I have been tracking sort of all of the things that have been discussed and some of the items. And I've kind of been putting them together as what can be tagged as conditions, just to try to reference some of the comments made by members of the public, questions by the commission, and trying to capture the sequence. Because we've heard a lot about how this is, this is simply a request for the use and not the request to construct anything, so I I've tried to memorialize that. But I, I wanted to at least make a couple of those points. And the other thing is that no matter what we do here, this doesn't negate or deviate from anything per the building code or the public health code. So all of that will be required. There's, there's no ways around that, but building can't get involved until they can demonstrate zoning approval. I'll take a breath now.
Can I say one thing about like issues that might arise?
Sure, sure, Mr. Lacey, go right ahead.
I think we've demonstrated that we're really good neighbors. So to make it simple, if there's a problem, everybody has our phone number. All the people that have opposed it, they've come to the farm and been supportive. And we were kinda shocked when they demonstrated that they were opposed to it, because when they were at the farm, they seemed to be supportive of it. So if there's a problem, they can just call us and we'll deal with it. Simple as that. We wanna be good neighbors.
Is that it, Mr. Lacey?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mike, you had stated about your punch list there. Is that something you're sharing at deliberations?
I am trying to make it something that's legible, but I can read to you before you close what some of these conditions are, so that you can, if you have questions or the applicant asks questions, you can go through it. And then if it looks good, I'll fix it up, and then I can share it when we, when we get into new business. Does that work?
Yes, that's fine, that's fine.
So just to clarify the comments about permitting, one of the conditions would require, again, this is without this condition, it's still required, but I'm just clarifying and memorializing. Administrative zoning permits shall be required prior to the construction of any structure on the property. Again, that's straightforward and, and is the case anyways, but I'm just clarifying. Number two, an engineered site plan for the proposed cidery brewing barn prepared in accordance with section three hundred twenty-two A shall be submitted to the commission for review and comment prior to the issuance of a building permit, so this is not requiring a separate approval, because the approval, everything happening on the site would be in accordance of with what's happening here. But, but the site plan, which we've heard a lot of comments about, prepared by an engineer, plans, you know, built for the building, prepared by an architect, all of which will need to be required, will be provided to the commission so that the commission has an opportunity to comment on that before a building permit is issued. It just would be sort of subordinate to the special permit, what you're doing, looking at now. A suggestion, which I, a suggested condition which I put in here based upon, again, some of the other comments were that an owner, the property owner or representative shall be on the, on the property for the duration of any private event. So if they are having a wedding on the property, that someone will be there. I expect that to be the case anyways, but I think that's reasonable for consideration. The number, pulling off of their application, the number of private events per year shall not exceed twelve. The maximum number of attendees for the private events not exceed two hundred. Temporary tents shall require approval from the fire marshal. That is code anyways, again, but I'm just stating it. Something else for discussion, outdoor entertainment shall be acoustic only and not include amplification. We didn't get that deep in the weeds in your discussion with the applicant, but that, I think, so noise is extremely hard to measure. It's extremely hard to quantify. You basically need a, a specific and specifically special device that needs to be calibrated and operated by someone who is trained. It's, and, and these issues, if they were to come up, are likely not gonna come up on a, on a Wednesday morning at ten thirty in the morning when I'm gonna run out from town hall and try to take a reading. I, I really don't see a lot of value in having something that has a, a decibel limit, et cetera, because it becomes impossible to, for the neighbors to know what, what that means and for us to, to measure it. I think that acoustic, non-amplified music is at least a good way to start. Hours of operation for the cidery tasting room not be late than seven, which is from their application. The hours of operation for the private events. I had a question on that. I wasn't sure if it was specified. I have in here ten thirty, but we can clarify that. I have public events and private events shall not occur on the same day, so you're not gonna have some big public festival happening at the same, on the same day that you're having a large wedding. There shall be no parking within two hundred fifty feet of an adjacent property. Again, they're not proposing this. They have well more than that, but again, this is just to memorialize this. Facilities for waste disposal and west restrooms shall be provided to the satisfaction of Eastern Highlands Health District. Again, not anything new. The last one I have in here is, again, speaking to sort of, I think, what a lot of the comments from, from commissioners, from the applicant, from members of the public, and just trying to figure out where to start. Thinking about the time of year and what's left in front of them before they can really do much. I have two years from the decision date. The commission reserves the right to perform a compliance review and determine if the intent of this approval has been met and/or if any conditions of approval need to be added, removed, or modified. So we can't set an expiration for special permits. They run with the land, so we can't say you've gotta come back in a year or it's revoked. But what we can do is set the clock and, and have the commission check in and say, how's it been going? By the time they go through state approvals, I don't know if Ben mentioned this, but they have notified the Department of Ag who is responsible for the deed restrictions, that they've submitted the application. They need to go through liquor control, local, building department, engineering, Eastern Highlands Health District. So it's gonna be some time before anything can really happen. And then we need some time for these things to actually happen, so we can get a sense of how they're working. So this gives us an opportunity, and you can change from two years to six months to whatever, for us to come back around if you feel it's appropriate and determine if we need to, you know, pull on any of these levers a little bit once we've gotten a couple, some operation under, under our belts. So I'm just gonna flip this and get these notes typed up, and then I can share this, and you guys can read it, and I can tweak them as needed or whatever.
Okay. Anything else, Mike?
That's it.
Mr. Chair, I have a quest, may I ask a couple of questions of?
Please, please do, please do, get it out now, absolutely.
Several of the issues that were brought up by Mr. Lindquist, I don't think are in our purview. One of them about the cidery, that they have to manufacture everything on site or demo food made on the premises. Am I correct? That's not something that, that we would deal with. That would be the Health Department.
Yeah, so the, the Health Department will obviously review any of those permitting, if they're providing any type of food. And on the liquor side, so they're, they're seeking approval for, for a cidery. So if, when they submit to liquor control, liquor control is gonna ask that they provide that information to me. And if the, if they come before me and say, okay, here's our form, I'm gonna have to sign to, to certify that they obtained a specific type of approval from you guys. So if they come before me with their liquor license application, and they're seeking, let's say, a restaurant liquor permit or a cafe liquor permit, that would be a different class. So you're correct in that those metrics are regulated by liquor control, but I would just wanna affirm to you that I would only endorse an application that had the same type of liquor license request as what you are, are looking at now. Does that make sense?
Okay, and one other question. As far as the overnight guests go, if, if, once they get set up to do that, would they need to come to us for a short-term rental application? Or are we okaying? By the special permit, are we okaying them to have the overnight guests?
So you're, this is all part of the, the application that's before you. The short-term rentals are specifically associated with, with a single-family residence. So in this case, you know, they're looking to build these for temporary farmworker housing, and then have the, they wanna have the ability to rent them when they're not occupied. But these would not, we're not issuing that approval, so they can function sort of independently as, as short-term rentals.
Well, I'm sorry, would you say that again? I didn't, I don't follow that.
So, so yes, the, the ability for them to use those structures is part of the application that's before you right now. It wouldn't come back before you separately. The single fam, the, the short-term rental regulations apply only to single-family residences. They are seeking to be able to use the structures, which are primarily for the farmworker housing, seasonal accommodations essentially, to basically offset that by renting them. But we're not issuing, again, like a separate approval that will be a standalone for short-term rental. So again, if down the road, they no longer have seasonal labor, they're not operating the agricultural use, they don't get to maintain the short-term rental. These all function as sort of interrelated to primary use of the property as agriculture.
Oh, okay, I get it. Thank you.
Moved into deliberation at this point, so. Anything else from the commissioners? Any information you wanna try and glean?
This is March Noble. So, so I just need clarification. Do we have to accept this application in its entirety? Or can they, there be portions such as the glamping that we don't approve?
I, I feel like we're kinda straddling the line between deliberations and between the hearing. Mike, what's your, what's your thought on that? Is, should we be moving on?
I mean, that's a question I can answer once the hearing is closed, because it's a process question of staff, so if you wanna close the hearing, you can.
Right, right. I'm just trying to make sure that we've answered all the questions that Mr. the Lacy's, Olivia and Ben would have done, or if there were other questions from the commissioners.
Mr. Chair, this is Doug.
Mr. Chair, this is Doug.
Yes, Doug.
I'm not really hearing any other questions from the commissioners, so I, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the hearing. Is there a second?
Janet, I'll second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing on PZC dash two, four, dash three, special permit application for section 317C for a farm brewery eatery, private event space, overnight guest accommodation at 317 Bemington Road, AKA Cooks Orchard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Thank you very much, Lacy's. Uh, thank you for, uh, the extra opportunity for the, uh, hearing to continue on. I think there was some good information gained. Thank you from the public also for your input. Uh, that's what helps us make our decisions for everyone involved. So that closes the public hearing. Um, we have, uh, nothing under unfinished business at this point. And, uh, moving on to new business regarding A is PZ dash two, four, dash five subdivision application, uh, conversion of agricultural lots to single building lot, uh, Armitage Road. This, this is a, again, a subdivision comp, uh, condensing, or it's bringing together two pieces. I guess, uh, I don't know. He's been very patient here. He seems to be the representative, uh, Mr. Costa-Papas. Hello. Anything you'd wish to, uh, share with the commission regarding this?
Hi, for the record, my name is Art Costa-Papas. I'm from Wykort Folkowners Real Estate. We have a signed application by Mr. Mark Rigardi and my, and myself. I represent Mr. Mark Rigardi as the buyer. And I also represent the owner. We're looking to combine the two lots that were originally bought as two separate lots. The lot on Ferentz Road was owned by the surviving owner uh, right now, and the lot that abutted Armitage Road was owned by the surviving owner, Mr. Simpson and his wife, which passed away. And that lot reverted to Mr. Simpson in a probate. We're looking to combine both lots in order to sell both lots as one lot. And we have done extensive wetlands testing, which we have wetlands application approval already, and also health department approval already. The house site that we're looking to build a house on is going to come in from Ferentz Road. It's going to cross the wetlands. It will have minimal impact on the wetlands that we demonstrated to the wetlands agency already, and we did receive approval. And then the house would be back from the road with a driveway. So we're looking to combine these lots as one lot because the buyer wants to just have just one lot, which is the proper way of doing it. And we're just seeking approval and your blessing on it. It's just that simple.
Okay, very good. Um, and again, I remind everyone, this is not a hearing. This is, uh, just, uh, business discussion. So we are in deliberations regarding this request. Input from the commissioners, uh, whether it's questions, discussion, clarifications. I'll start the ball. The, based on the map here, this does not go down as far as Turnpike Road, correct? It's simply bordered by a piece of land before that, and then on one side Armitage and the other side Ferentz. Is that right, Mr. Costa-Papas?
It does not go to Turnpike Road. No. There's a lot more houses before Turnpike Road on both Armitage and before Turnpike Road coming into Ferentz.
Okay.
So this is totally connecting the backside of Armitage Road and the front side of Ferentz Road as like one big rectangular piece, basically. That's it. Uh, that map shows that, and also the map, that's the combination of the two lots is there for you.
Yes.
Could we see that map again, please?
Sure. Do you want to see the overall map or the map with the proposed home?
The overall map.
Okay.
Did you have a question, Jerry?
Yeah, I was just looking that it's a very long and narrow piece of property. And to where the house was going to be located. There we go. If that's the map I should have asked for. Well, that makes it a very long driveway.
No, it is a long driveway. And if you look at where the wetlands is, it's very short crossing of the wetlands, but there's another map that actually shows the frontage on Ferentz Road.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the property.
Okay.
I was just looking at it and wondering why you didn't put a driveway in from Armitage Road that it would be shorter driveway.
That particular side of the road, um, you have a big, you have a big brook coming in from the north and it's crossing into the property and you have a bridge there. That bridge is basically not able to cross into the driveway. If you're going to cross over it with a fire truck, that bridge might collapse. So it's not very, basically a good bridge. And if you go up the road, if you want to show the, the map before, you can follow my thinking. If you want to show the map of the two lots being connected, if you want to turn to that map.
Okay.
Okay. All right. If you look where Armitage Road is, there's an old logging road. They're coming across the north side of the property.
Yes, I see that.
That's a very steep slope. And on the bottom of that, there's a lot of wetland areas. Basically, most of that piece except the area where that logging road turns to the south. Most of that piece is wet. There's no way you're going to put a house site over there. And if you follow that logging road, uh, number one, you've got the bridge to deal with. And number two, you've got the slope to deal with. And number three, you've got severe wetlands. Is it just combining the two lots? Uh, it's the best way to do this. And the original piece coming off of Armitage Road, which originally bought by Mr. Simpson, which just used for hunting deer, as, as you know, deer like wetlands. So the decision was made to do the driveway coming from Ferentz Road. And the, the other component coming in from Ferentz Road is that the chairman, Mr. Rigardi goes to work to Worcester. He's the doctor, emergency room doctor. It's closer to him. And it's much more easier and a lot less impact on the wetlands coming in from Ferentz Road. And I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Or concerns or issues? Hearing seeing none. I'll ask for, is there a motion to accept the subdivision application?
Motion to accept.
Jerry? Is there a second?
Second Luther.
Second by Luther.
I have a motion I can put up if you'd like.
Surely. That was you, right, Mike?
Yep, yep.
Oh, there we go. Sorry.
So we just did this on James Road. Um, so this is the, the same list of, of conditions. And again, just to clarify, this was, these subdivision, or these lots already exist, but when they were created and other decisions were made with the associated land, these parcels were not contemplated as building lots. And so this is again, the conversion to create a building lot, but there's no actual changes in, in parcels. You see the, the map there. They're actually being combined. So the number of parcels goes down. But it's just creating the ability to construct a single-family home on the property.
What would be the expiration date? Of this approval, Mike?
Uh, it would be good for five years.
Okay, thank you.
For the house construction?
Uh, no, for the approval of this sub, basically the one lot subdivision. Not to construct the house.
But we're looking to approve the combination of the two lots together. And we already have approval from the Wetlands Commission and the Health Commission, the Health Department to construct the house. We're also seeking approval from planning and zoning to construct a house.
So this, this is just saying that those approvals that if you have them will be incorporated into the final Mylar because the Mylar will have to be filed with the town clerk. So it, it's not, it's not putting a time clock and actually constructing the physical dwelling.
Oh, okay. But, um, I believe I gave you a Mylar for the actual combination of the two lots that I submitted for signature. Is that something different that we're looking here?
Right. So this would be a Mylar to memorialize the approval of the subdivision, which has to be filed by statute within 90 days of the approval.
Is that something different that I gave, what I gave you?
I don't have what you gave me in front of me, but I don't, the, the Mylar has to be signed by the chairman and he can't sign it until they've approved this application.
Oh, okay. That's fine. So we're looking for the approval of the application, if that's possible. So what I see here is mostly what we talked about already.
Okay, so this is the motion um, with the conditions being required. So with all this in here, we have a motion to accept. We have a second. Uh, all those in favor of the motion as written and provided by the zoning enforcement officer here, um, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none. So moved. It's been approved.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Costa-Papas.
Uh, Mr. Damaro Michael, thank you very much for your help.
No problem. Take care.
Bye.
Okay. Moving on to no business B, uh, PZC dash 24 dash three, special permit application for section 317C for the farm brewery eatery, um, deliberations regarding this. I open it up to the commissioners. Your thoughts, your, uh, input?
I think it's great that, uh, they're looking to expand their business a little bit so they can survive. We have fuel orchards over in Eastford. They do a lot of these same functions. And it helps them survive. And we have other functions in town that attract a lot of people. We have the hole-in-the-wall gang camp. We have our functions at the town park. But and as far as, you know, like a, a truck or two going in with a load of hay or supplies, so that's, that's about normal. Even, uh, along that road, I've seen trucks along there many times. And I think I think it's a, a good thing for them to, uh, be able to, uh, do other things to, to survive.
Uh, Nora?
Yeah, I feel that the, uh, expansion of Crook Orchard would be a wholesome addition to our town. So I'm in favor of this and that's all I wanted to say.
Agree. Yep.
Luther?
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree with, uh, both, uh, the previous gentleman and I, I do like that Mike uh, was good enough to point out that all of these uses are a continuation and, and reliant on the continued principal use of agriculture on the farm. It's not as though they're looking to supplant the agricultural nature of the property and turn it into something other than a farm. Uh, farming is hard. And it's, uh, I think it's a the property has demonstrated that it can sustain large numbers of uh, customers and, uh, traffic counts and, and all the things that were discussed during the public hearing, the, the orchard over the years has seemed to be able to demonstrate that it has the capacity to take on those demands as they arise. And you know, I, I think that this is, this is the sort of thing that makes a lot of sense to foster a good community basis of services and and, and reasonable growth.
Janet?
Hi, I, I agree. I, I'm delighted that, um, they've, they've, uh, taken over Crooks Orchard and are, are, um, planting more apples and seem to know about apples. Um, I, I, and I, I, I think, uh, a lot of these are, are very good ideas and I, I understand the need to, um, supplement their, um, income. I, I, I do have two concerns based on public comment. One is, um, the number of people that might be there, um, camping and while the there'll only be room for two beds. So I mean, for two people to sleep, but, um, uh, will there be big parties? And I'm wondering if we should add something about you know, how many guests are allowed or some regulation for that? My other question is, uh, traffic. If we do not require, and, and I know that, um, Westford Hill Distillery, which seems to be doing quite well, and they have events with quite a few people on a small road. It doesn't seem to be a big problem for them or their neighbors, but I'm wondering if there is a traffic problem when we do a review, how do we address that? It, you know, is, is it too late or? I don't know, just, uh, that's, those are my two concerns.
Yeah, it's also interesting when you think about it, um, people going to a wedding with a two hundred occupancy. Whoever your plus one is, everyone's not taking separate cars. So you don't really have two hundred cars coming to an event that's like that. What you would simply have is, you know, somewhere in the range of maybe a hundred cars if it were two people in each car. I mean, and then you know, people come together, I, I don't see two hundred cars being on those back roads trying to get into that parking lot. Um, Doug?
Well, yeah, but you didn't answer my question, excuse me.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I did have a question. My question was, if there is a, if there does turn out to be a traffic issue and Mike had said we could review this in two years, well, what do we do then? Do, can we say, you know, you, you can have, you can only have fewer people? Um, I, I'm not anticipating that there will be one, but I, I, I think it's prudent to ask the question.
Well, I guess that becomes my question too, because I thought of it when I wrote down the note that Mike said is, wh- what are we reviewing? A- a- at all? I mean, are we only reviewing a complaint that comes up, or are we reviewing what's taken place over the course of the two years, um, you know, with, with no complaints? Um, are we waiting the two years if there are complaints, you know, multiple complaints that we have to deal with? Um, is that too long a time? You know, should, uh, should there be an initial one year, uh, to see what the status is? And I know there's a lot of hoops for them to jump through when it comes to the um, regulatory groups they have to work with and where they're going to get to. But, um, I also think that, for me, I mean, honestly, I'm once bitten, twice shy here with special permits that go with the land and, you know, what the commission has experienced before. I greatly appreciate the input from the Ag Commission, I greatly input the EDC uh, and also the, uh, the State of Connecticut, obviously, uh, identifying this as a, um, uh, agritourism activities, uh, that fall under that, that guy's. Uh, Doug?
Yeah, Jeff, um, I guess as I'm thinking through a whole bunch of things here, I don't, unfortunately, I, I like to talk to data, but I don't have any data, I just have my observations over the what, almost eleven years of been in this town, and the, the current property over there, Cro- Crooks Orchards, does and can sustain a, a fairly sizable amount of folks coming and going. And I, I live on a cut-through road. The speed limit of twenty-five, it's Cushman Road, people cut through my road to cut the corner to get to eighty-nine South. And I'll tell you, eh, while I'm not out there counting the cars, I know I have multiple hundreds of cars that go by my house every day. And while it may seem frustrating in the middle of the day trying to pull out, it's, the town has sustained it for decades. So, I think the only way you're gonna be able to anybody's gonna be able to do anything is there, you're gonna have to do studies, but I'm not proposing that, and I'm not asking for that. Um, I think what I'm trying to say is that I, I, I don't think there's an I, I think these are just perceived concerns that haven't really demonstrated themselves over the years, even with the, the operation that has existed to date.
This is are you complete?
Uh, on that topic at the moment, yes.
Yep, okay, very good. Mark?
So I'm, I'm in full, full support of the cider in a tasting room. I mean, I think it's a, a great use of the, the land, the property um, and the sustainability of the farm. I think what, what I have an issue with is the, whatever we want to call it, glamps, glamping, gypsy trailer, um, portable housing with zero facilities. Um, I thi- I think that's, that's my big sticking point. Um, we, we don't allow tiny houses in town, we don't allow additional campgrounds i- in town. Um, and in my opinion, you know, these gypsy trailers, um, fall into both categories. Um, I, I personally think we're potentially opening up a can of worms by allowing trailers that have zero fa- facilities for use by, um, you know, transient workers or, um, or renters. I, I think it's a bad precedent. The, the rest of the plan, I think I'm fine with. Though, I, I do feel that they don't seem to have much of a formal business plan in this project. Seems like they're, uh, throwing something against the wall and seeing what's sticking in the plan. So I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of the cider in the tasting room, I'm one hundred percent against the, uh, the portable gypsy, you know, they want to call it glamping, but I call it gypsy trailers. My, my brother lives in Utah and that's those trailers are typically what they use for, uh, for sh- for sheep farming, you know, up in the Rocky Mountains. Uh, in fact, that's exactly what they use. With the, with the exception that they have a wood stove, um, you know, inside of them.
How about, um, the, uh, the event planning, or the event?
Piece? I, I think I'm, I'm fine with the event piece. I'm a little apprehensive about the two hundred people, um, having hosted a, you know, hundred person of wedding event on my property when my daughter got married, you know, for one weekend, and this event's twice that, um, but again, it's a larger parcel, um. So, so I think overall, I'm okay with the event planning, it's, my big sticking point is the, uh, the gypsy trailers.
Thank you, Mark. Luther?
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, I just wanted to circle back to the traffic concept while we were talking about it, you know, from thinking back on past applications, uh, when we have concerns about traffic, it, it often has to do with, um, is there adequate sightline, is there adequate, um, parking, is there adequate, um, you know, sightline and all of that? And, and all of those things seem to exist with this property. You know, they've been able to demonstrate from the site plan revision that there's adequate off-street parking. Um, and the, the sightline getting in and out of that property is really good. And, and I, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if they would staff events in such a way that they have someone facilitating people, um, you know, coming off the road, that's not uncommon at, at, at farm events. Um, and, and, uh, I, I hear, I hear Mark's concern with the, the, um, seasonal housing. Um, that's how I, that's more how I perceive it is, you know, seasonal farm worker housing, that's how it was presented. Um, initially, seasonal farm worker housing that they're going to leverage the existing asset, uh, when it's not being utilized by the farm workers, um. Housing for farm workers is a real need when you look at these kinds of, uh, a high intensity of labor, uh, farming uses, you know, we're, we're fortunate in our farm that we're able to utilize a lot of equipment uh, to, to mechanize the process of, of the, a lot of the farming that we do, we still have plenty of handwork, but the bulk of our, our crop work is all mechanized, and that's not a luxury that the orchard and fruit industry is really able to uh, take advantage of until you get into a really large scale. And I, um, you know, I think it's a massive undertaking that they've, they've put in that many more trees, and I, I really see that they're gonna the way the market works, you, you know, you, you almost are compelled to provide the housing for um, the workers as part of the compensation basis, because you can't really afford to pay them uh, such a wage that you can then, that they can then find their own accommodations. It's almost a built-in based cost of, of, of the workforce that you're providing housing and a stipend. So the farming part of it just really doesn't work well without the ability to offer from my perspective, from an agricultural perspective and my own experience on our farm, I totally understand why they want to be able to provide the on-farm housing. It just is a much more elegant solution to finding, uh, the help. So, thanks.
Thank you. Janet?
Um, I just wanted to, yeah, respond to Mark that, um, for instance, I know Buell's Orchard in Eastford has provided, um, housing for, um, it's, um, it's, it's migrant pickers, um, for, I don't know, decades, um, and, uh, I don't see that that i- is, is a problem.
What, what type of housing, Janet? Um, you know, we're talking gypsy trailers with zero facilities.
Well, I, I don't think you can say they have no facilities if they're building a, uh, a, a bathhouse for them.
How cool, but again, they, they also mentioned that these trailers will be portable and moved around the property, so I can't say that the bathhouse is gonna be within twenty feet of the trailer. Having, having camped most of my life as a male, I can tell you that if the if the bathhouse is more than twenty feet from my trailer, I'm, I'm not gonna utilize the bathhouse to relieve myself at two o'clock in the morning. Again, I, I've been camping my entire life, and, uh, again, I understand it's probably different for my wife and daughters, although I will tell you that my, my daughters are, uh, pretty much on par with myself at two o'clock in the morning. And they're adults. So, so yes, I have serious issues with portable trailers with no facilities. You know, again, if it was, if it was a, a, a trailer with a bathroom, that could be you know, hooked up to a septic system, I think that's, that's different, but then again, that also falls into our you know, our campground regulations. Um, again, we have campground regulations, we have tiny house regulations, and this seems to be thwarting both of those. Um, and I'm pretty certain we have orchards around the state that, that don't offer um, that type of housing you know, on their orchards. I'm not, I'm not aware of the, um, Colas Orchard in Talon, that they have gypsy trailers on their property for transient workers. Um, I also have serious concerns about the type of facility that a transient worker is willing to live in, you know, in comparison to, you know, glamping, I'm sorry. You know, I, I, I'm an affluent person who would definitely consider glamping, um. I can assure you, I'm not gonna glamp in the same trailer that a migrant worker i- is willing to live in. So, yeah, I, 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 I continue to have issues with the, uh, the temporary housing.
I guess, I guess what I think about on this, since I don't see another hand up, um, what I think about on this is if, if the seasonal uh, accommodations are the primary function of this. You think about it, it's Connecticut, okay, and you can wear, in May, you can wear shorts and a parka in the same day. I mean, um, or it could be November or December, even doing that, we're seeing that now, um. So, I think the, without the, and I can't remember if these things had any type of heat, um, accommodation, heat or, uh, air conditioning or anything in them, I didn't, they seem very simple. But I'm thinking that some type of a bunkhouse or whatever type of structure, uh, for the seasonal piece would be appropriate. Not these, again, with more considering these, uh, caravans. Um, you know, just because they're cute and somebody might want to, you know, sleep in them for a couple of nights, uh, I don't think for three of them, I don't think it's gonna draw that much, and I don't think it's going to be the make and break of the, uh, the farm for having three of these rented, uh, for whatever times, and we have no regulations over them as we do short-term rentals. Um, but again, if they're used for the seasonal purpose eight months out of the year, I mean, am I off on that, Luther, the timeframe? More like six?
Fo- fortunately, I am not in the orcharding business.
I understand.
So, so I can't give you as accurate an answer as someone that is in the orcharding business, but I think it is important to understand that any, so, a couple of things, anything that we're talking about, um, in terms of a person or persons renting these, these units when they're not in use by seasonal workers. Yeah, I mean, the principal use is seasonal workers, and then i- i- is how it was presented to us. Like, that's the principal use for why they need them, is for seasonal workers, and then the ability to use them for lodging for either educational purposes, or people that are just looking to do something different, or, or however they seem to be used appropriately, is the secondary use of them, and, and like also, it's not really our place to say whether it's a good idea or not, as to if they're gonna be able to sell them out, or or if people are gonna be interested in staying there, that's really not our purview to say, um, yeah, this is something someone's
Well, well, it is and it isn't, because what's been brought up, and which has been a very underlying thing, is them being, uh, viable. I mean, having the ability to use everything on the farm, that there's an orchard that's available to them to potentially make a, a, a family livable wage and support themselves on this, so.
Yeah, but I think there's
It is a consideration as to how much this does, you know, play into it.
I, I guess, I, I, I could have phrased that better in that I would believe there is a much more significant um, impact to be had in the labor savings by being able to provide housing uh, to migrant workers, than there is revenue to be made by uh, booking these out for, uh, people that might want to stay in them.
Froze. Well, thank you back, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me a second. I'm sorry, my dog goes nuts when the power is out, he's like digging into a corner here trying to hide himself. He's got his thunder shirt on, he's also, um, I'm sorry, Luther, go ahead.
No, so I don't know how much of that I froze for, but all I was trying to say is that I understand, um, what you were saying, Jeff, I think that because this has been framed as a, a, a necessary, uh, measure for economic viability for the farm, that it has some standing as to the economic impact that these might have. My belief is that they're probably gonna save, they're gonna have a, uh, more impact on the revenues that, uh, from saving labor costs by being able to provide housing, than something that they're going to uh, get a windfall on booking these out. And so if they're, if, if, if their principal use for them is to provide housing for labor force, then as long as they're able to do that, and as long as they're able to demonstrate that it's, it's, um, you know, they're providing the facilities for these people, you know, I, I don't think it's as important that we judge as to whether people are going to flock to this as something that they see as fun as it is that we understand that this is something that will help support their labor force.
A- a- I'm total agreement, absolutely. Mark?
So again, I don't want to belabor this, but when we were in executive session at the last meeting, we were discussing a f- a family that was.
Uh, could, why why are you going there?
Because we were allowed, we were allowing the use of someone to stay in it. We we don't allow the use of someone staying in a trailer in the RA zone. This is a we're contemplating allowing trailers again in the RA zone. This this seems to be exactly the same discussion as what we discussed in executive session. This this is a use that we don't allow in the RA zone.
So I don't know that we're supposed to be discussing anything about what we discuss in executive session.
I'm just, again, this 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 is a use that's not allowed in the RA zone.
Technically, you're allowed r- residents in a trailer six months.
Yeah, we we need to be talking about the application in front of us.
One of us, the application in front of us is for, you know, temporary worker housing as related to agriculture as a principal use.
But is it six month, but is it six months if we're allowing agricultural workers and because I I would say that, you know, and the question that you couldn't answer about, you know, orchards typically you start spraying trees and in March. And if it's apples, you're still picking in September or October. So you're talking a seven month time period plus the rental. So you know, that that would exceed that six months of trailer use.
Yeah, and 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 again, I'm not referencing the six month trailer living situation because that's I don't think what we're talking about here. This isn't an RV. This isn't, you know, somebody living in a trailer on their property. This is, I think, a little bit different.
I don't agree.
Yeah.
Again, and I I understand Mark's point where um, you know, we s- we seem to regulate everything else from.
We just lost Jeff.
intensive frame to freeze on.
Well, I I live right down the road from Jeff and power had come back on and it just came back off again.
Has the potential to lead us down a a path.
You lost you for a moment there, Jeff.
Yeah, okay. That's that's what I was saying was I was worried that I lost. I didn't know if I was on with the lights flickering here. Um, but again, um, between uh, short term rentals and small housing, uh, yeah, accessory dwelling units, I mean, we seem to regulate a number of things. Uh, my internet is unstable. My phone's probably about to die on me. Um, and you know, something like this just seems to be counterintuitive to what we've looked at and tried to control uh, the nature of it. Uh, again, I think uh, as you said, Arthur, uh, as you said, Luther, from an agricultural use, accessory use that it's a requirement for the seasonal, I think it's I think it's absolutely appropriate. Um, I'm just concerned with the nature of the I I I'm a little concerned of the nature of the wagons themselves. If that's the way they want to choose to use them, then that's fine. I would think some type of a more uh, structural basis, something that's more protective from March through September um, for seasonal workers would be more appropriate. Um, but I'm I I I'm really hesitant uh, as Marcus said about the uh, the opportunity to rent them out uh, for use. Any other input from any of the commissioners? Really, a number of items were brought up. Uh, you know, we talked about the traffic. Um, the thing is, you know, when we talk about the events, you're talking in this case, twelve events. So you're talking twelve days a year um, to try and deal with a traffic study. That's not going to be really effective because it could be a a twenty five person event, it could be a two hundred person event. And again, the the curve is going through. A traffic study isn't going to get you anything. Yes, it's going to be more uh, it's going to be busier on those days with the larger events. It's not going to be as busy as those days with the lesser events. Yeah, that's known. But it's again, it's twelve days out of a three hundred and sixty five day uh, year. Yeah, and I know probably you're not going to have your outdoor uh, wedding in New England at Crooks Orchard um, during the winter. Um, so uh, I'm trying to think what else was brought up on here. Um,
Well, Jeff, I I think a couple of things are brought up, as I stated earlier, not really in our purview. There's permitting that needs to occur with the state for for the um, the cidery and and so on and so forth. What what's in our purview is where is the building located on the site plan which has been provided to us and so on and so forth?
Yeah, and Mike had laid out the fact that, you know, it's the use that we're talking about here, not the
Correct.
Not uh, the structures and such which have to fall through, as you said, out of our purview through um, Eastern Highlands building.
Eastern Highlands, building permits, et cetera. Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
And I do think, you know, and I think Mike touched upon this too, as I wrote down some of the notes on uh, stipulations. I do think being a good neighbor, as the Lacy said, I do think it would behoove them to have or plan for a uh, owner or owner representative onsite for those events uh, to, you know, deal with any problems along those lines, have the be the responsible party for that as opposed to the the renters or the folks using it um, for that day to not be responsible for those items or feel they're not responsible for certain items. I would I would have more peace of mind if it was me, having someone there uh, to you know, answer questions or just, you know, no, no, you can't go running through the fields, uh, you know, all of these types of things to keep a controlled measure on this.
Well, I I think that's fair, Jeff. I think I can't speak for them, but if if we were having an event on the farm here, you couldn't get me to not be.
Exactly.
Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that we've put into the place. You don't want people running amok through it and I'm I'd be willing to wager that they'd be in the same position.
And I, you know, and I'm sure the Lacy's are going to vet them appropriately and stuff too, but you never, you never know, you know, who's, you know, you can vet the people that rent the place, but whoever they invite, you haven't had a, you haven't had an opportunity to meet and have a good feeling about.
Well, and as you have mentioned, because the use goes with the land, having a condition to the permit that requires an owner or owner agent to be there if the property were to change hands in the future, it's just doing good business on behalf of the town.
Sure. Who sticks, non application, times. So again, uh, Mike, are you still with us? Well, I know you are, but are you still with us?
I'm here.
Okay, um, one of the questions, this came up again when Janet was speaking too. There go my lights again. Hey, I'm back, okay. Thank God for a hotspot, I tell you. Um, with the review, what types of things would uh, or what types of I guess uh, actions, what's actionable for us on something like that if it were, you know, requiring a a one year or two year compliance review?
So
What comes to mind for you?
Separately, I think, you know, just keep in mind that if there's a violation of something, right? If there's something else comes up that that is not contemplated by the application or wasn't reviewed or they start doing something that you know, any violation of the zoning regulations on any property, we can begin an action on at any point in time. So really, this would be looking at the items contained within the discussion or with the condition. So, you know, if, for example, you decide i- if all of a sudden they start holding events and they're having two hundred person weddings and and traffic is completely unruly and there's traffic jams and people are driving all over the road and and we're getting an outcry from neighbors and it's really just worst case scenario. Then I think that's when you have a conversation with them and say, listen, you know, your last four events, how many people have been there? And they might say, well, we've had, you know, right at two hundred. And you might say, okay, well, we need to look at that because we're having some issues with based upon that. So you you can go through and I think in my mind, you're having issues with noise, you know, it's a sort of looking at the operational components of the application as you've just discussed and some of those conditions and trying to figure out, you know, if there are things that need to be adjusted. So does does some of that you know, need to be, or or is there some type of condition that needs to be added? If you know, but to your point, yeah, it would be based upon feedback that we've.
It would have to be based on complaints, right, that we've received?
Yeah, or or observations or, you know, so health health department's going to be doing inspections if they're serving food. The fire marshal is going to be doing an inspection every time they install a tent. So that I I think that uh, the applicant mentioned or or, you know, these tents go up and they don't stay up. Um, so e- every time a a tent is installed, the fire marshal will do an inspection to make sure that it meets all that criteria. So you know, if we find that we've got issues with, you know, something when those inspections are happening, if there's routinely, you know, concerns with cleanliness by the health department.
The state police reports on traffic accidents in the area, that type of thing.
Right, right. So, yeah, it would be, it would be, you know, based upon feedback or observations and then, you know, the commission interpreting that feedback to determine if there's an operational issue or maybe they had one time event that they learned from and they said, yeah, you know, we had this type of an event on this type of a day and it just did not work and we're never going to do that again. I'm rambling. I don't know if I'm helping.
No, no, you're fine. You're fine. Okay.
Jeff, can I ask a question about that too with the review period? Um, so I guess the concern I have about putting some some time determined review process in place for for the permit is how does that impact the viability of 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 what these property owners are are looking to do that if they're going to spend probably not inconsiderable amount of money to stand up the additional uses that they're looking to pursue with this application. And they're potentially at peril for losing some of those uses after a two year period. Um, i- is that doing them a disservice?
Can I just suggest that um, since they're committed to being new good neighbors, I I think if there are issues, they would be willing to work on 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 how to solve them. And I don't think the commission would be um, uh, you know, nitpicking or trying to to get them at m- minor issues that it would, but you know, as I pointed out, one of my concerns is traffic. If there is a huge traffic issue, maybe we need to discuss with them how many people they can have or how figure out how to make the traffic work. Um, so I I don't, I don't see that um, we would be looking to um, cause, you know, really inhibit what they're doing. It's just how do we make it work for everybody? And I think we need to have some protections for um, for the neighbors who who have expressed some concerns over this.
Well, you've got, you've got like two or three ways for it to go. I mean, if you if you have a two year uh, review for compliance, um, one, nothing went wrong. So everything moves along fine. Um, two, um, there were some issues or complaints that came up that need to be addressed. Um, and when, one, you're making them aware of them if they weren't aware of them. And two, ideally, you're looking to find a you 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 don't want to pull the rug out from under them for what they're doing. You're trying to find a mutually agreeable solution to those uh, legitimate complaints, legitimate uh, notice of violations, uh, acts of noncompliance. And I don't think we're so um, what's the word I'm looking for? Uh, you know, we're not looking for heads to roll here. We're really just looking to make sure that protections are in place as well as you know, working with the group to be that good neighbor to make sure that um, they are an effective good part of the community. And I know that's where they want to be too. So I know that doesn't answer your question structurally, Luther, but uh,
Yeah, uh, no, I I understand what you're saying. I just it seems like a partial it's it would be um, it would be doing work at risk is the way I would perceive it, that if I if I were getting a permit and I knew that you know, at the two year period, it could be modified or 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 suspended or something like that, then you're you're effectively building out a new business or or a change of of your business or growth of your business at risk because there's the potential and and perhaps I'm I'm um, assuming too severe a a piece of language. Um, and perhaps all it really is is um, we're going to conduct business as usual to address any complaints that might come through and also sit down in two years for a lessons learned conversation about what's going well and what we can do better.
Yeah, I mean, many of the, I know many of the contracts I work with, it's usually, you know, the statements in there are uh, mutually agreeable type of solutions and things like that that work, you know, work for them, work for us. And we can probably form some language that way. I would think. Uh, it's what I would do. I want them to be successful. I think we, I don't think there's anyone here that doesn't want them to be successful. Um, but we also have a a responsibility to the community and the uh, you know, the the surrounding neighbors and such to make sure that uh, nothing goes awry. You know, as we said, it goes with the property too. So maybe the Lacy's have the best of intent and, you know, God forbid that they decide they want to switch or move to Colorado and say, forget this New England stuff. Um, and you know, it goes to someone else that didn't come in with the same intent. Hey. Any other comment? That I've missed?
And I and I'll just say, I would, I would be expecting the Lacy's to proactively work on any problems. So in two years, we wouldn't have anything to discuss.
Nor, did you have something? Nor?
Talking to me?
Yeah, I thought, did you say something?
No.
Okay, thank you. So the other thing that's on the table that we've uh, been battered around is um, the So the other thing that's on the table that we've uh, been battered around is um, the. The application as a whole for all of the items on it or a portion of it. And uh, you know, we've got some. We've got some opinions on here as to what would be viable. Or what would be doable. Short term, long term. It seems like. Uh, you know, if you were prioritizing things, the the cidery. This is what I gathered uh, from, you know, our discussions with the Lacy's, the cidery um. Uh, tasting room. The uh, ability to. I don't know how this would form. It's it's still kind of funky in my mind. Uh, the offering of food. Uh, to be consumed. I guess that's, that's a certain licensing, Mike?
With any ti- anytime you're providing, you know, any type of food, you have to get a. A food service license from Eastern Highlands.
Even even for packaged goods, whether it's a vending machine or whatever.
I think if it's a, if they're not serving it, if it was a vending machine, then no, because the. They're not interested so much in the food. They're interested in how it's prepared, how it's kept, and if it's being served in a clean way. So if they just put a a vending machine, then I would say no. Um, but they will have to demonstrate all of that to liquor control because liquor control likes to see some type of food offered. With alcohol if possible.
Okay. Uh, the events, wedding events or large. Venue.
You're asking me if they, the same thing, if they would need approvals?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just, may, I'm just kind of prior prioritizing items here in my mind. And if anyone thinks anything differently, please, please speak up. The fourth is the um. Seasonal. Accommodations. Housing. And the fifth one is the camping. Have I covered all of? Am I missing something?
Or where where you you want to include the bath house? When, would you or?
I think that the size of that structure was so small that it doesn't require a zoning permit at all.
Oh, okay.
Right. So, um, Mike, was there something you wanted to share with us, those um, that listing?
I, yep, I can. So it's in motion format.
Mike, can you elaborate on condition number two? What does that mean?
You have to come in with a final, a final set of plans for a staff level permit.
Okay, so like. Final set of site plan and. What the structure is, because the the plans for the structure are all part of the building permit.
Yeah, so we do the, yeah, the zoning permit with staff is separate and and ahead of the building permit. I just wanted to clarify that. There's not going to be structures placed on the property without someone somehow capturing. So if it's a two hundred square foot or less building. That has no mechanicals or plumbing, it wouldn't need a building permit, but it would still need a zoning permit. So just wanted to sort of memorialize that, you know, overall, they're not going to be putting up structures that we won't know about.
Okay, largely showing where it is and that it's meeting setbacks.
Correct.
Okay.
And not facilitating, not facilitating some use of the property that wasn't contemplated by this approval. So if the bath house all of a sudden had a commercial kitchen in it, I might say, uh, we need to talk about this.
Okay, thank you.
The only other thing that I. That I'll point to is the last one. You guys have been kind of talking about it. The only thing that I I could suggest just on the fly, if if you were someone or overall, you were uncomfortable with the with the review. And I understand the discussion about how do we move the goalpost after an approval has been issued and and. And frankly, I think it's it's a very. There's a lot of nuance with that discussion. Uh, I think that it should be a dialogue and and. Yeah, you wouldn't want to be in a situation where you change the maximum number of attendees from two hundred to fifty, because that would be a huge concern for the applicant. I would say that, you know, that would require the applicant to be before you. And it would require a hearing, so you're not going to just do it arbitrarily and they would have an opportunity to respond. If you felt that that was too strong and and I can see both sides of that issue. You could modify this language. We could adjust it to basically say that the commission would have the opportunity to. Um, provide recommendations. Again, we can't do much with recommendations, um. Sort of an alternative set of of language, but.
Yeah, I I hear you. I. I equally share a concern of. We, there's, there's risk there that of like pulling the rug out from underneath you. And personally, if if I was investing into my property. I don't want the rug pulled out from underneath me. Because I work my ass off to be able to invest in what I'm doing. Are you there, Mike?
Yep, I'm here. I I, yeah, I can, I completely understand. I I think that.
Sorry, I thought I was talking to the wall. That's all right.
No, although I I can't, I can't suggest that I'm much better than a wall, but um, I think that. When the use, when any special permit is issued for a use, and it could be for any use in any town in Connecticut. It's hard to really try to drill down and and identify metrics. That you can measure the operation of the use with, and that's not specific to this. It's that's, that's almost every use. If it's a, you know, if it's a um. Uh, an industrial, you know, warehouse, you can manage trucks in and out trips per day. That's that's basically. The the singular metric, um, but with with these types of uses. It's much harder, and so I can't quantify. All of the public hearing items into some concise condition that says, you know. In excess of this or or in a duration longer than that. To be able to come back two years from now and say, oh, okay, well, you're clearly in violation of the following. Unless one of us goes there and counts the number of attendees for every event. You know, but. So the intent of that is really just to. Put a, put a deadline on coming back around and making sure that there have been no substantial deviations. But I think that, you know, all of the discussion, all of the exhibits, all of the feedback. Are incorporated in the public hearing. So if the applicant agrees to something or they represent something to the commission. And through operation of the use, you find that it's not the case. Because it's lacking in the actual motion or certificate of action, or it's not specifically listed. In their description and and narrative doesn't somehow mean that we don't have the right to hold them to it. If they say that that they are. You know, only going to limit the number of of occupants in these little little. Cabin camper, whatever you want to call them, to two. And we find out that very consistently they're offering them to four or six people per unit. That's clearly in the public record. That is part of the application and that's how you've made your decision. So we could still then go forward and say, we have an issue here. You told us two and it's very clearly six. So you're not. You're not, um, your hands are not tied behind your back, that if it's not codified in this condition, you're now precluded from doing anything.
Would it be too limiting to have language that's, you know, more concrete? In that, uh, you know, a two year comply, uh, after two years from the time, whatever, um. A compliance review for um. Zoning regulation violations, legitimate complaints, uh, inspection reports. And uh, I don't want to say general observations because that just defeats my purpose here, um, but um. I don't know, I guess it would be, uh. That would fall under inspection, so we could take out observations, but something like that. Or am I getting too uh? Too uh, direct?
I think you could include that. It's just a matter of what is the intent, the intent. In my mind, you have two trains of thought that I'm hearing. One is. We want to be able to, as I said originally, sort of pull on some of those letter levers down the road if there are issues. And in that case, you want to have language that supports you being able to do that, which is sort of the 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 lens that I wrote. The original condition with, or there's this sort of other side of that, which is we don't want to. Put the applicant in a position where they're going to invest time and resources and then not know what two years down the road looks like and and create that risk. If that's the sort of intent, if that's the way the majority of the commission feels. Then we would want to change that to basically say, we're going to have this discussion, but we're going to be making recommendations. Right? We're, there's a difference between we're going to ask you and we're going to tell you.
Personally, I want to, I'm sorry, Mark, you've had your hand up. Have you been waiting this time or did you just forget to take it down?
No, I've been waiting.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Go right ahead.
So so Mike mentioned about the commercial kitchen and and tonight the discussion was on a hundred and ninety. Square foot bath house, but but last month. What was proposed was a bath house and kitchen because these trailers have no facilities. So, is this bath house still containing the kitchen? Is this? Because that's what was proposed. At last month's meeting, was that it was going to be a bath house and kitchen facility, but now it's a hundred and ninety square foot building that doesn't fall under the. Purview of P and Z.
I don't have an answer to that. I forgot that the kitchen was mentioned. Thank you for capturing that.
Yeah, that that is correct, that they mentioned there'd be a small kitchenette in there for people to be able to heat food up, but. It's also interesting that, again, if it's under the scope of what requires a zoning permit. Then. We're kind of out of the picture.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a microwave and a coffee maker. I mean, that could be the the kitchenette nature of it, um. But if it falls under the size and fits in, then, you know, and they're not making the food for commercial use or whatever.
Yeah, which isn't our scope anyway.
Right, right, right. But I'm saying, that's where, that's where the, yeah, uh, health department would kick in.
Right, I don't know what the health department regulations are and having bathroom and uh. Food preparation within close proximity, but so.
Some of the apartments I live in and health department could come after me any years ago. But um. Well, I guess, I guess for, thank you, Mark, um. Going back to what Mike was saying, you know. I don't want to, begins with a P. Can anyone help me with that word? It's not pedantic. It is. When you lower the boom on somebody. Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm. I'm not looking to pull the rug out from someone, but if someone is in violation, then they brought it on themselves.
So I guess the question is, if they're in violation, then they're in violation, whether we have a review period or not. And we can take all the steps that would normally be available to us if someone's in violation.
And what are those steps if we don't lay them out?
Well, if, from what I understand, and I could be wrong on this, from what Mike was talking about earlier, is that if if they're found to be. Um, not compliant with. The uses as they've outlined them in the public uh, forum here. Then he has steps that he can take as the enforcement officer to. Um, cite or drive into compliance, uh, the noncompliance. So I guess it might, the way I look at it is, and it maybe I'm being too simplistic, i- if we. Are concerned that they're going to become noncompliant with what we're allowing them to do. Then don't we already have mechanisms for pursuing noncompliant? Uh, individuals and businesses in town. And if we're concerned that we might need to scale back the scope of our approval, then that's a whole different exercise.
Well, if, what if it were, you know, there's different things. Obviously, there's zoning regulations fall in our purview. If it was a traffic issue. Does that, you know, and again, state police has accidents or there's reports and things like this. Unless we consciously go after them, I don't think there's going to be any report into the land use office regarding these types of things about this location. So if we're not doing a review of these basic categories. We're not going to, or it it's just going to go on. Or it's going to cause problems.
So if I could just, if I could jump in, so. Yeah, th- this review, even if you, if you kept that condition as I wrote it, that. This review two years from now could not result in a revocation of the permit. Because the commission can't revoke the permit. So to your points earlier, if. If even after the first event, there's a vi- a violation, and and that could be of the zoning regulations or of their permit. This, the first step would be to issue a cease and desist order. Now, if we thought, let's say we're, we're we're all shocked at how. Are horrific Bevington Road functions and this is, eh, eh, there's a complete failure of the roadway. There's accidents, there's all kinds of problems, and we feel there's a significant health and safety concern. After issuing that cease and desist order, I can actually go to the ZBA and I could say. Hey, ZBA, this is a public health and safety issue. I need you to to actually grant a stay of this appeal, even if it's. Or grant a stay of this order, even if the appeal, it's it's appealed by the owner. And they basically come to a full ground stop until that issue is rectified. And that's a statewide issue. That's not something specific to Ashford, but if there were other concerns, let's say there were significant. Uh, issues with traffic and not just a complaint about traffic. Because there's already traffic. We don't know where someone's coming from, where they're going, how they came to town. We don't measure all of those things. But if there's a a significant and consistent change in traffic. Then then that at some point may be worth looking at, trying to understand if there are. Things that that could be done to adjust it. Is it, is it an issue of something in the roadway? Was there a change to an adjacent street that's now putting more traffic on that road? You know, it it really just, again, warrants a conversation and trying to understand what was the cause and what is the effect. But to your point, Jeff, you're correct. You're not going to ask them two years from now to perform a traffic study. Because. We're sort of past the point of. we're sort of past the point of necessarily being able to measure some of those, some of those changes. I can tell you that, you know, this isn't anywhere near the amount of tra- traffic or parking that would warrant the state, Office of State Traffic Administration review, if this was two hundred spaces, it would require an O S T A review, and there would be nothing that the applicant could do, we're, we're not at that point. So again, I, I feel like I'm falling short of giving you guys answers that will help you get to a point where you can feel like you're comfortable, you know, that two years from now, you're going to have that opportunity and, and not create, uh, a, a situation where the applicant feels like they basically have to wait two years to get started.
No, Mike, that was actually very helpful, that last round of info you just gave us there, the clarification that it's not putting the permit at jeopardy, but that it's an opportunity to come together and talk about what's working and provide context and, and have a conversation. That's very reassuring to me, and, and, and I, i- if I were the applicant, it would be reassuring to me as the applicant, that this isn't actually at risk, this is just we're going to do this, and then we're going to talk about how it's worked and what we might be able to do better. That, that seems entirely reasonable, and, and, and with that clarification, I mean, all the conditions that were just outlined on the screen a few moments ago, I think are reasonable, and I would support all of that, I think that all makes a lot of good sense.
So, Mike, is your terminology there phrased in a manner that the intent you just outlined is easily identifiable if one were to read this in two years from now, or three years from now, or whatever?
Uh, so I just adjusted it. Two years from the decision date, the commission reserves the right to perform a compliance review, I'm going to say with the applicant, to determine if the intent of this approval has been met, and to make recommendations for any operational changes that may be necessary.
I could support that. That sounds good.
I'm fine with that.
That's good.
You looking for motion?
No, not, you're not at this point, but we, uh, I, I guess one of the things on, I'm sorry, who's talking?
What, no, I was just, I was going to second Jerry's motion if he
He didn't motion yet, he says he's, are you looking for a motion? He had a question.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. So just to clarify, this is the motion that was just recently revised with two findings that I showed earlier, and a total of fourteen conditions. I can share it again if you want, it's exactly the same as what I just showed you, except number fourteen has been modified. Uh, two years from the decision date, the commission reserves the right to perform a compliance review with the applicant to determine if the intent of this approval has been met, and to make recommendations for any operational changes that may be necessary.
Sounds good.
Okay, so there's a motion to accept, and there was a second? I'm sorry, I didn't capture, Jerry, did you motion?
Yes, I did.
Luther, did you second?
Yes.
So all those in favor of the motion as Mike has put together regarding the, um, uh, special permit application for section three hundred seventeen C for farm brewery, eatery, private event space, and overnight guest accommodations at three seventeen Bevington Road, uh, with the conditions as outlined, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Significantly saying aye?
Aye.
Uh, all those opposed?
Aye, Mark Schnubel.
Or nay, that's me. So, um, so we've got Nord, I just want to be sure here, we capture this? Smith, Schnul, uh, Bellamy, Brock, Jenny, and, um, Jerry? So just to, just to be clear here, um, Nord, you were a yay?
No, I'm, I'm a yay.
You're a yay, yeah.
I'm in favor of this.
Yep, um, and, uh, Luther, you were yay?
Yes.
And Janet?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
And Doug?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yep.
You were a day, okay, and Mark and myself were nay, so it was one, two, three, four, five, six, six to two for Valerie's purposes. Okay, so, um, the application's fast. And moving on to new business C, approval of two thousand twenty-five meeting dates, uh, Mike, I'll bring that up.
Uh, yep, just give me one second.
Surely.
And should be coming up now.
Oh, you have, okay, great. Okay, so this is just, uh, it's actually, um, something that we've done in the past, where we bring it up to the committee and have a motion to approve, you actually don't have to do that, the chair are able, the chair is, uh, able to just submit this, there is no F O I requirement, however, as a matter of courtesy and just habit, we, uh, do this with most of the commissions. So these are the dates, uh, for two thousand twenty-five, um, the only, uh, holiday in question is October thirteenth for Columbus Day, so that becomes, uh, Tuesday the fourteenth. Um, meetings may be held, this is a statement that the town clerk has suggested, we had it on our two thousand twenty-four list also, meetings may be held virtually or hybrid, with instructions for logging in noted on the individual agendas. Um, any concerns, issues, Mark and I have both vetted this, um, for the proper dates, so any questions?
No.
Um, this is Steve, are you going to send this out so I can, um, get it onto my calendar good?
No, 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 you're going to have to guess each time, figure out whether it's a second or first Monday, absolutely, we'll send this out.
Can you email a copy of that out to, uh, members?
We'll do that, absolutely. Okay, so a motion to approve the, uh, meeting dates for two thousand twenty-five, is there a motion?
So do.
Jerry, is there a second?
Second, Janet.
Janet, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Uh, last item, Mike, you make everybody's friend if you keep it short, zoning officer report.
The only thing that I'll mention is that I'm, I'm hoping to have the draft of the, um, I I D stuff that we talked about a couple of months ago to you, so that you give me back on your plate um, for January.
Okay, anything else?
That'll do it.
Okay, uh, P O C D is meeting regularly, we missed a meeting last week, that was my fault, but the P O C D subcommittee has been meeting, uh, on a regular basis, where, uh, we've provided the survey, that's gone out, uh, and Mike got that posted, it's in the, it was in the Citizen, uh, it's available hard copy from the land use office, also at the, uh, library and the senior center. And, uh, I think Janet, we talked about working with the school also, to, uh, get some copies over there for, uh, teachers and such, P T O and so on, so, uh, also available with a, uh, U R L uh, and a link to that through the website, so, um, uh, we're getting some responses coming in, I've had some good, uh, feedback regarding the survey itself, it's very thoughtful, and I appreciate the, uh, subcommittee, uh, and the work they did on that, so once we get through the survey, we're actually starting in to look at the submissions from the different departments, we've asked for them to rewrite, uh, or provide us with that information, so we can not reinvent the wheel, but get, uh, the subject matter experts to provide us with information uh, regarding their individual sections, so, and, uh, we'll have a more full report next month in January.
I'll just mention that I just looked, and we have a hundred and nine responses so far.
Fantastic, you had ten last week, I think it was.
Yeah, they've been coming in pretty, uh, pretty good clip.
That's great, fantastic. Janet's not hawking at, at the, uh, transfer station, we know that, so. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Janet, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you all very much, thank you, sorry about the length, hearings tend to do that. Take care, if I don't say everyone, have wonderful holidays, have a great Christmas.